Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I'd like to call this meeting in order to the Wyndham Northeast Advisory Union. First, I'm going to do is introduction.
Artie, you're muted.
Still muted, friend.
Artie Merrill, W N U E S D, Grafton, Vermont.
Jack Brier, Chair Emeritus from Grafton, Vermont, and representing the folks in Grafton and Athens.
Dean?
P N P L C Westminster School Board.
Chris?
Chris Kibbe, Rockingham School Board Treasurer of the W N E S U.
Deb?
I'm Cardine, Director of Instruction and Innovation for the District.
Deb Wright?
Representative, Rockingham High School Board.
Karen?
Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Jim?
Jim McCollum, Rockingham School Board.
Lynn?
Lynn Morgan, W N U E S Board of...
So.
Priscilla Lambert, Representative of Rockingham Board and Clerk of this Board.
Molly Vanek, Representative of Westminster, Bellas Falls School Board and Chair of this Board.
Andy Haas, Superintendent of W N E S U.
Jennifer Keenan, Early Education Principal.
Jim Vazino, Finance.
Cheryl Charles, Westminster School Board.
Then I miss Chris.
You got me.
All right. You were at the bottom of my list, sorry about that. Adjustments to the agenda, I have one. I'd like to add an 8B, and it's going to be Project Grad bus request. Does anyone else have any adjustments to the agenda? We've seen none, so.
And Margie is joining us. She's a voting member.
She is not.
She's not, okay.
Communication and public comments. Looks like we have a few on there, you gonna need?
I don't have any hands up, but I have, this Darcy's still connecting, so I don't know if we can give her just a minute.
Okay.
I don't know who that is.
That's my second. Maybe just come and do.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right.
Maybe she should come in.
All right. We don't think we have any, so we're going to move on to review and approve Board minutes for December 14th. Jack? Jack's made the motion to approve the Board minutes for December 14th. Does anyone have any adjustments need to be done?
Yes.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
On page four, I don't, I think Chris Kitty's comment was to without a competent attorney reviewing it beforehand. Rather than a competent one.
Yeah.
And then it's a motion on page five. I don't think Jack, we were approving Jack Brier's leave of absence as a parent educator. So that probably should read, motion to approve an immediate and indefinite leave of absence to the parent educator requesting leave.
Thank you, Priscilla, anyone else? There's a motion on a floor to approve the minutes. Jack, with your permission, I'd like to approve the minutes with the corrections made on page four and five.
Yes, we'll change that to a motion to approve the minutes as corrected, thank you.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call. Deb Wright?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Jack?
Yes.
Dean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Jim? Lynn?
Aye.
Priscilla? Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We'll get reports, central office reports, finance. Jim, it's all you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has this been emailed to the folks?
Yes, they have.
Thank you very much.
So I just wanted, I mean, it was a couple of weeks ago we went over this, but most of the the overages in some of the accounts, and I'm looking at page one, which has a summary by function. And I just will say some of, some of this is because, and if you look at like the superintendent's services, well, in that, in that function, they have placed all of the worker comp cost right now. And, and so there's, I think $67,000 that will, will certainly move out of that. I think it was thrown in there just as a holding spot. Again, the SU rent, it doesn't belong in the, in the superintendent's office, it belongs in the the operations facilities. So there's kind of a mismatch for where the budget is and where the expense went. Overall, I mean, I think, I think you're doing fine at 141,000 to the good. On the revenue side, which is page 13. And everybody's paying their assessment right on time, right amount. And so I've, I've shown the assessment on line seven. Because currently how it's set up in e-finance, it's not broken out like entity paying. And it's certainly in the new software setup, it'll, it'll have the separate entity, whichever entity is paying, and how much. The other thing that does not show here, and it will, is at some point in time, we will have indirect cost for the, some of the S R funds. And so I don't know how much that is, but let's say, I hope it's 200,000. And again, that will show up in your revenue. And as, as Jim and I talked last night, you know, I've got to talk with the auditors about whether we can credit that immediately in next year's budget, so that it will push back some surplus back to you. So we'll, we'll see how that goes, but, but you certainly will end up with some sort of surplus after we squeeze everything out. I also want to say food service, food service is a balanced operation, you know, it's a million dollar operation. They do a summer programming, which right now looks like you're over on the expenditures, but you're really not. They've spent more because of the summer programming. So think of it, they spent, you know, $400,000 during the summer, they got extra revenue, and it shows up here as, as food service revenue, and food service shows on line 19. It's a federal reimbursement for food service, and you can see it's, you know, you got it right now. You've got a $906,000. So you still got a half year of revenues that will go into that account. So I think, I think you're doing well. The only other thing that I just want to mention is the state of Vermont, as you may know, it's hard to track them sometimes, but they, they want to try to balance the teacher retirement system. And I guess way back, somebody forgot what they were doing or where they were doing it. And it created a very, very deep deficit, which they're trying to climb out of. And right now, and it affects our superintendent's operation because the federal projects, all of the federal projects, and where I took a, I talked with him today, and I said, where I take exception the most is in the title on programming, because that's direct with kids reading and math support. But they're taking, and they went up this year, they went up from 19 to 26%. And so out of every million dollars that we receive, we're sending 250,000 to Montpelier to balance out that retirement deficit. And you know, I, 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 I'm troubled by it because, you know, we could use that. I mean, the federal government gives us a certain sum of money to, to try to improve and support educational needs. And you know, this is one of those rob Peter to pay Paul. So I wanted you to be aware of it because it will affect us. I mean, if we're taking 25% of every federal dollar, it will affect us. So I, and that came out December, I want to say 16th, 18th, something like that, so it's still it's still simmering.
Who makes a decision like that, Jim?
I think the legislative ed committee, or, or the whatever legislative committee oversees the teachers' retirement system. And I'm not sure who that is, to be honest, I don't, if I know.
Building on Jim's question, where's the authority for that? I mean, where does it come from to be able to?
There's a statute. And, and the letter Jim gave us cited a statute, and I haven't read it yet, Jim, but I believe the legislature, the answer to your question is, the legislature has the authority to do it because they passed a statute, and presumably, they didn't pass a statute without making sure that they couldn't use federal money that way. So I would like the, the letter that you had included in the Rockingham packet had the citation for that statute, and I think before I go down the road too far, you need to read that statute because I have a feeling there's not much that can be done. I have a question just on the revenues, though. So on page 13, I guess, I don't know how the Act 173 block grant gets paid to the districts. Can we expect the remaining $1,182,024?
Yes, that'll be approximately May.
Okay, but it's coming. That seemed to be the biggest chunk of money that was still out there.
Chris, I just want to say along with that, Act 173, wonderful how the state gets to balance their income based on taking special education money away. And recall, we lost 200,000.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, a couple, a couple things. First is, I agree with Chris about having this, this business about the statute citation being reviewed. And it seems like it's something that a Pietro might want to be solicited to give us an opinion on. And, and the second is that we have been a epicenter of, of resistance to stupid legislation in the past, and 173 certainly qualifies. For one thing, federal law supersedes state law, and federal law says that frankly, you can't do what the state of Vermont has proposed to do. This same, the same stuff came up in Utah, came up in Pennsylvania, where they tried to arbitrarily cut state responsibility to, to special ed funding. And the law says, oh, no, 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 the state is the direct, has direct responsibilities, right in the federal statute. And at some point, someone ought to call them on it. I'm not sure how, you know, whether we want to sign up for yet another, you know, kamikaze run at the state. I won't be here to be part of it, but it's something you really might want to either use the old Act 46 gang or somebody to say, hey, this is, you know, I, I know David with Mark and some other folks from outside the area have, have circled around this issue, but I really think that there needs to be some fairly fierce resistance because it's, it's class-based. It's geographically ine, there's inequity geographically. And, and again, it comes to be in the federal statute, and it'd be really nice if somebody pointed that out to our friends in Montpelier.
Deb Wright?
I just wanted to be clear, what was being said about the 25% of every federal dollar?
26.
I'm sorry?
26.
26%?
Yes.
Okay, of every federal dollar, going back for them to pay down a pension problem? I mean, I'm confused by that, it makes it sound like they weren't paying into the pension pot where they were supposed to be putting the money, and they're basically taking it back from us. If that's not correct, please, I mean, if, if, am I correct on this? Or if I, am I incorrect? If not, it's like they're making us pay for what they didn't take care of themselves. So please correct me if I'm wrong.
Many years ago, they, they, they have shorted the pension fund for decades. So it's not a new problem, it's a, it's a developing problem.
Beth Pierce used to send out these, these sort of frantic little letters, the time we would finish up our audits, pointing out that there was this massive unfunded pension liability. What she didn't say was what that, what the implications of that are, and this is one of those implications. Again, this is not, we're not the first state to have played this game, got caught on it, and got slapped. Massachusetts went through it a couple of years ago. Now, there, wasn't there, Chris, a sort of like kick down the, kick down the road piece of legislation to study it to death and come up with a partial solution? We did some of that already, the question. But it doesn't solve the problem because the problem would actually now constitute a, a noticeable chunk of the state budget if they had to clean it up.
So Priscilla's got her hand up.
Yes, and, and thank you, Chris, for pointing out that it's been a problem over the years. They not only did not fund the pension fund, they borrowed from it and took money from it to pay into other things. And so it has created this problem, and then they did not fund it for years. And so now, yeah, they have to find some way of finding money to put, to, to cover it. And so it's developed even into a worse problem. But what I have a question for you, Jim, is the assessed revenues, our budget is supposed to be just assessments of the districts. So if we are simply assessing them, are you, do you take money in advance? Or is it in response to actual costs, because that would be an assessment? And, and I'm not sure how we can end up with a surplus because we're not supposed to have any extra money.
It's, it's of specific items that, that were in your budget that are agreed to, you know, transportation, special education, and, and other assessed items. And it's done on a monthly basis. So each month, each district is, is invoiced, and they pay that one twelfth of, of the assessment.
But wouldn't that even out, like the last month, if we were on top of it, wouldn't it be that we didn't take that? So that we didn't end up with?
Well, see, what I've
Or was that, or was that, I'm trying to find out, yeah.
I just want to make sure legally, I'm concerned because, again, that your each district has gone to their taxpayers and said, hey, our budget is this X dollars with that assessment in it. So you've collected that money already for, from the taxpayers to do the assessment. So I just want to be careful in what we do and how we do it, because I don't want to have a scrambled, chaotic mess either. I want it just to be clean, and, and it'll probably be that you, I will collect your assessment as, as was agreed upon, and I'll reach, I'm going to try to return the, the surplus when and as quick as I can. And, and because ultimately, you will get that money back, then it's a question of when, whether it's this year or the following year.
But we can't keep a surplus, and that happens with our, our budgets too. We budget, and when we have a surplus, we simply the next year go to the taxpayers and ask them. To me, I would think that money has to go right back to each of the districts right now, so that we can ask the taxpayers.
Do you mind if Jim steps in? No, go ahead.
Well, I think there's two things. Page 13 is, is basically the 2023 budget status. Okay, the 2022 audit is being concluded. And if there's a surplus in the 2022 audit, then those funds will be returned to the districts. The question is, when are we going to know what the number is? And when will that transfer occur? Will it be in time for the 2024 budget? Or will it have to go off until 2025? But the, that's the way, you make your assessments, you pay your assessments, they do the accounting. If there's a surplus, they give it back, the deficit, you have to make up for it in the, in the following year, so.
And when you, when you think about it, I mean, it's probably straightforward as if there's a balance, June 30th, that money will be returned to each district based on the percentage of payments as of July 1st. So I, I think it'll be as easy as that.
Do we have a, do we have a preliminary number for 2022?
I, I do not.
Okay, because we got one in the email for Rockingham.
We've, we've asked her, and we're pushing heavy and hard.
All right.
Any other questions for the Finance Director? It looks like
Thanks, John.
Green, clear, I've looked down through it, Jim, it doesn't look like anything else. You don't need, you're sending me?
He's going to ask, I don't think there's anything.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the budget is Director of Instruction and Innovation, Deb Cardone, is that right?
Cardine.
Cardine.
Hi. Here I am, can you hear me? Excellent, I'm going to share my screen.
Yeah, I gotta give you permission. Hang on.
Yeah, you already did, it looks like. Can you see a slide deck?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, so first of all, thanks for giving me this time. Andy asked me to share our Sback assessment results from last spring, so that's what I'm here to do. I want to just, well, first of all, Sback, I'm going to try and be really clear about acronyms. Sback stands for Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. That's the standardized assessment that is administered through the state. So that's what I'm going to be sharing with you today. These assessments go from third through ninth grade, and they were administered last spring. They are in ELA and math. They also do two grades worth of science assessments. I did not bring those results today, but I'm happy to share those another time if that's interesting. So a little bit about standardized testing, I, I put a little quote in here just to kind of remind us of a few things. Standardized test scores are but one indicator of student achievement. They're silent to important aspects of students' reading development. This applies to other content areas as well, and the development of students' motivation and self-concept. So just a reminder that this is one picture, this is one point in time, this is one tool that we use to see how our kids are doing, and it's a broad scale tool. It's an assessment that has many skills embedded within it. It requires a great amount of stamina for kids to complete it, and a great amount of motivation. There's a number of contextual factors that go into how kids do, how, how they perform within this assessment. So it's, it's a 30,000 foot view of how our kids are doing. I just wanted to kind of put that pin in there for us to keep in mind that this is, this is what we're looking at. So the first slide, let's see. There it is. First slide, this is 21, 22 Sback data for ELA. What you're looking at is each grade, their performance in literacy in ELA, English Language Arts. The blue bar represents the state average, the purple bars represent our district's average. As you can see, we've got, we've got some, some gaps to address, and it, and it fluctuates across grades. One thing I would say as we move through these slides is to, is to think about what is missing from here? What, what questions do you have as we look at these numbers? So that we can be thinking along the lines for future presentations that maybe get into a little more depth. Any questions on this, are we good to move on?
Well, the, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I was just interested in the fact that third grade and ninth grade are about equal in terms of, you know, state as well as our local. And then ninth, I'm saying ninth, and third. So, six as well. So, but I was interested in the extremes, I guess, and then in the middle. And I, I don't know if, when we get to it, whether you have some perspective on why you can go from eighth grade that way to ninth grade. And developmentally with the kids, that's all. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I welcome a dialogue here. This does not need to be my voice alone at all. I would, I, I just want to remember, this is, these are all different groups of kids, right? So that's one contextual factor, that's, every group's different.
Deb, hang on one second.
Yeah.
Did we, she stepped out, so I guess I'll, I know Jack had a comment, and I think Margie had a comment, I'm just looking at it, so. And if I'm missing people, I'll, I'll try the best I can to moderate this.
Okay, great.
What was your answer to the first question? It's just different views?
Wondering about third, sixth, and ninth? Yeah, I think, I think that tends to, that tends to occur, different cohorts of kids perform quite differently. I don't know that there, that would be an interesting question to dig into, is, is that a trend over time? That third grade tends to do better than other grades, but that's not anything that I'm aware of.
You, we're also looking at, there's different points here where students and, and as much as, not to beat a dead horse, but what effect did the pandemic have on these different groups at their learning stages? And, and, and the ability to recover? And, and that's one of the things that nationally is starting to come out, is, is, is how are students at different groups able to recover quicker because of where they lost learning? So that, that definitely could be part of it, so.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Jack, I think Jack and Margie.
Okay. Okay, so here comes the stats guy. I'm, I'm looking at this. What sizes, what size are these individual, what, 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 what do we got for Sam?
Uh, what sizes, what size are these uh individual? What 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 do we got for sample size here? How many people in this class?
For the state or for the district?
The state we can't fix. It's the uh because the state is a large body. You've got a consistent, you've got a relatively consistent pattern. Uh, here we've got a small body and stochastic variation clearly is at least part of what we're looking at here. So what do we? How many we got? We got a hundred kids total in these different uh uh? Pops or what do we got?
Average, I think around seventy, between sixty-five, seventy-five, somewhere around there.
Okay.
It fluctuates.
So that's, you know, that's certainly factor X in looking at this data set. Uh, factor of Y is that, as you note, these are discrete populations with discrete characteristics. God knows what their life has been like in. Twen- uh twenty uh twenty, twenty, twenty-one, uh twenty nineteen. Is this the first year we've used this uh this particular assessment tool?
Oh, no, we've been. We've been using it since two thousand thirteen, I believe.
We have even like a three-year trends analysis that can show us whether or not something has been happening consistently. In other words, is it the shift from fifth to of? Seventh to eighth grade or or eighth to ninth grade that this happens every year? That kind of stuff tells us a lot. This as a snapshot tells us that the data is so patchy as to not have a lot of value.
Yeah, and and that is the that is the downfall of this thirty thousand foot view, right? It's hard to see much.
It it's also when you get a microscopic sample size in a snapshot as opposed to a trend. Then I don't know if, you know, if every year we go from uh from a reasonably good uh sixth grade uh scoring to a. Reasonably terrible one. Uh, that would be because no, you know, otherwise. There's some things in here that don't happen. You don't go from twenty-five percent to forty-two percent. Year to year to year. I'd be willing to bet that if you looked at another shot of this, that doesn't happen. So what you're looking at is variation. Without really an explanation or anything to offset the data to sort of clarify what you're looking at.
That's right.
I- i- in your pile, will you have a have some of that? Were you look, can we anticipate that in your uh? Uh, your your uh card set here?
Yes, we're gonna look. The last couple of slides, we're gonna look at a couple cohorts over time. So starting in third grade up through ninth grade. And fourth uh fourth grade through ninth grade, third grade through um eighth grade.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
So Margie had her hand up.
Margie. You're muted.
Am I? Am I reading the Y axis correctly here? So not even at the state level, not even fifty percent of students are demonstrating proficiency?
Yes, that is correct.
That's correct.
Not even fifty percent of any grade. From third through ninth is that's crazy. Okay, all right.
Our our. Efficiency be really useful to know here, and the definition of proficiency used by the federal government tends to be. Pretty pretty remarkable. Uh, and as a result, every every state, we actually tr- track relatively well compared to. To other states around the country. It's just that if you're setting a bar that is not an achievable bar, that everybody's going to fail.
Okay, gotcha. And and at this, this particular assessment is one of the more challenging assessments nationwide, like each each regional area utilizes a different. Standardized assessment. My understanding is Sback's one of the most difficult ones.
Right.
Uh, we're not using this after this year, right? They changed.
I I would.
You're right.
I was gonna make that comment. Um. But just not to muddy the waters, but this um. This year, uh, the state has chosen to go to a new assessment that uh we'll we'll be hopeful that. This data will somehow compare to the new data, but we don't know. So um.
Deb, the floor is yours to move on.
All right. Thank you, Molly. So the next slide I have. There it is. Uh, this is math. So similar layout, you're looking at grades. And state versus uh district averages. Same kids, so ninth grade kids on the ELA. This is the ninth grade class with their math.
And 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 just for clarification.
Yeah.
Nineteen not being current ninth graders. They're current eighth graders.
Yes, ninth as of last spring.
People from last, from last year.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. Any questions or we?
Nobody can.
Well, I think the the question that I have is that, you know, what I see here is that in in English and math. Uh, we are consistently below the state average. Uh, and in some cases. Horribly below. Uh, and I think that the uh. Uh, if you if I think that the 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 challenge here is to. Is to take this data there and. And uh provide meaningful suggestions to the board as to what what we can do. To uh help mitigate this problem. So I think that's. The the raw data is is tough and. Uh, but uh that's what we need. We need some analysis here and some meaningful analysis. So.
And I and honestly, I think we need a different tool for that. So that is, we'll talk about that at the end, what what? Tools will give us more meaningful information. Than this broad of a view. If that makes sense. I agree with you. All right. So looking at now, looking at over time. So this is our current ninth graders. Looking at their. Uh, level of proficiency, starting in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, because that was the first year that we assessed them. Across time that the blank area that you see here, this was that year of COVID where nobody did any testing. So you can notice, we were pretty close. To the state average. Pre-pandemic. Coming back from pandemic. We see pretty big gaps.
We didn't do as well.
What's that?
He just said.
We didn't do as well.
We didn't do as well. Yep, yep. We can, we can see effects from the pandemic. Same cohort. For math. Very similar trends. Pre-pandemic. Started to see some gap in fifth grade. This is the same group of kids across time. And um. Decreased. Skills coming back from the pandemic.
State numbers. They went down too. I mean, the state numbers are.
Nationwide. Nationwide, yeah.
I mean, I want. Sorry, I just was gonna say, I want, like, if we did not see a drop during the pandemic, it would be, that would be a whole nother thing to uncover because that would mean kids don't need school. Well, I think it's expected, but I think there's a lot of work to do. Um. But I think it it shouldn't be surprising that kids uh rates of proficiency are. Have been greatly impacted by their time at school.
I think it's just helpful to remember. That we weren't there before pandemic. We weren't. Quite this. Low.
Yeah, it's it's converted to state.
Well, we did considerably less well than the state.
Well, interesting. Thanks, one. Would indicate that at least the tenth grade cohort. Um. Not was impacted but largely recovered, whereas the ninth grade cohort. Did not, which gets back to what are your, what are we sampling?
Well, and I think I it it makes me wonder, brings the question for me. Um, what's going to happen to this current eight, this current cohort when they hit ninth grade?
I I I think one other thing um. That with this slide that's that struck me and just to point out is we know that kids. Tend to do horror at transition times. So this is, you know, as 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 you're seeing transitions happening, you see scores go down uh for for groups. Um, and so. Um, you know, so in fifth grade, what you know, kids were doing, you're in one school all the way up through fourth grade. Largely, this is our whole snapshot, right? But then we see the dip of fifth grade, and so we see some natural dips. So.
We don't see ninth grade, which is a transition grade.
Correct, but they've now settled in um at at that ninth grade and eighth grade is just a challenging year. I mean, this is. Last year was a very challenging year for a lot of kids, but I think that's where I was going back to what I was talking about earlier. Certain groups recovered. At. At an age, you know, at a ninth grade age, those kids have got a lot of learning that they've been in, so their ability to recover is is is. Potentially greater. So.
And and I think it speaks honestly to our high school. In in a in a positive way. They they put a tremendous amount of energy into that transition into ninth grade. Here's our current tenth grade math.
Here, you've got almost a different result in terms of that eighth and ninth. Yeah, this is the status. Yes. All right.
But again, the state average really dipping.
Okay, let's.
All right, so what's next? I'm going to talk about a few things and I'm going to really give you a kind of another thirty thousand foot view. I'd love to come back and talk in more depth. There's a lot of teams that are involved in a lot of the things that we have. Um, happening right now in the district, which is pretty exciting. Some of the things we're aiming to do to address these um these challenges. Number one. Is to really get um skilled at digging into data as a district. Our teachers, our administrators, uh, we've got a lot of assessment tools at our fingertips, which is great, great news. And um Shelley Wilson and I are are. Very determined to hold data meetings in February. What that means is setting aside time for staff. To dig into and look at student assessment results. And student assessment roles results, not from these, you know, this level of of view, but from a narrower view using. Um, tools that really dig in and give us useful information like you were talking about. Dibbles being one of them for literacy. It's a fairly new assessment to the district. Came into play last year. Um, and people are getting much more comfortable with it. We've got great feedback from staff. And then the map data for the upper grades has some utility to it, and the PNOA, which is a math diagnostic assessment that. Um, is being used around the district, but we're going to fine tune how that's being used and and what that looks like. We're working to find data managers for each school. What that looks like is someone in each school organizing the information for their teachers. Um, so that teachers can access it easily. Data is only as good as we use it, right? So that's in regards to uh, that's where we're at with with our data work. Um, social emotional learning FDL. Uh, we have implemented responsive classroom. As you know, that began last year. Our elementary schools are in year two. Lots of professional development around that and lots of conversations about. Giving students um engaging our students, really engaging them and their learning opportunities, giving them opportunities to self-direct their learning and have choice within their learning. Um, and and increase their self-concept, really. Um, and then restorative practices. We've got someone in each school um supporting teachers in that regard with small, small group intervention. Um, work there. And then for ELA, English Language Arts, that's our literacy work. I've been meeting monthly with teams from K through four. Focusing on SOR. SOR stands for Science of Reading, and that is, there's been a lot of progress in how we teach reading. Um, that really uh stems from this idea that the more teachers understand how kids learn to read. The better they can do with their instruction. And so we're really digging deeply into what are all the components of of children learning to read and how do we apply those to? Our instruction. We are uh beginning with a committee to consider new programming. Our program that we have. In our teacher's hands for literacy is. Not um represented well within the research. Um, so we're going to address that. Across this year and years to come. And those Dibbles tools that I mentioned that get at those discrete skills, um, we're going to be using those broader across up through it. They go up through eighth grade, so we'll be working towards that. And math, we are working closely with ALN, which is All Learners Network. That's a state-level organization with a wonderful coach. Who works with our um, we've targeted our five, our grades five through eight for those math challenges that. Um, have have made themselves very clear. And she comes once a month to each school and works intensely with teams of teachers, individual teachers. She's kind of at our fingertips and has been really great. Um, yeah. So that is what I have for you today.
Thank you, Deb.
Yep.
Deb. Could you send out that to us or?
It it it's included in my superintendent's report with the link to it. So the hyperlink is there.
I couldn't get the link to.
I couldn't get it. I mean, I couldn't either.
I can change the, I'll change the permissions. Maybe it's.
So you, so so what happens is that you get a preview and if you click on the preview, then it'll go big.
I got it.
So.
Really?
Did you get it properly?
Yeah, I didn't open it.
Yeah, you should be able to open it.
If if you're getting a thing that says request.
None of that one. It just didn't open on that one. Yeah.
Just thinking that if she sent it out separately, certainly embedded in a report, it makes it easier, frankly.
Anyway, we'd like it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That'd be great, Deb. Thanks.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right. Chris, Andy, you're up. Jack's kind of.
Jack, did you have a hand up?
Question, Deb. You showed the interventions that you have planned. How have those uh been adjusted by the data? You know, one of the I. People in this, in this brochure have heard this one before, but the but oftentimes, two things always bother me about these kind of. Uh, these kind of discussions. One is, we have this set of data and we're going to, and we're going to do an intervention program. That we would have done without the data. It's just that's what we were going to do. Have there been changes here and what are they?
Yes, I would say absolutely. So one, first of all, our decision to target the upper grades for math with our um math coach was absolutely. Related to these scores, to the map scores, to a, as we can see that those are the grades that we, we very intentionally targeted. More professional development towards those teachers in order to meet the gaps that they were. Faced with based on the pan- pandemic because their kids are with them with less skills from their earlier years. That's that's a national trend. Um, as far as things like, so for instance, Dibbles, that assessment tool that I told you about. Implementing that is going to be what then gives us information for the instructional tools we want to use. So our first step is to really become knowledgeable. In what we need to use before we start using the things, if that makes sense.
Uh, uh, okay, because and and do you have any? Uh, per output goals, even informal ones. You know, one of the things, again, it's it's a real educational thing. It it uh it's part of the culture that we measure how fast we spin the wheel, not whether or not it's getting any traction. And I'm just, uh, and I'm wondering again. Do you guys have sort of even baseline what you'd like to be seeing in terms of what these new changes should? Generate in the way of results?
I mean, yeah, I think, but that's, I would say. A couple of things. One, and Andy, I invite you to to join in on this, but the work we're doing with our leadership teams. In the um instructional leadership teams, they're really trying hard to develop. Exactly the goals you're kind of, you're talking about within the school level. So what is our focus going to be and what are our goals? As far as district level goals, yeah, we want. Every kid to be able to read and and perform math at at grade level. That's a given. At the, at the more discreet level. When we look at those Dibbles results, which I'd be happy to come and share as the year goes by, those are going to be incremental. Tools that we can say, okay, a kindergartner, we want our kindergarteners to be able to recognize all their letters and sounds. Period, right? And so we can take these individual things. Is that not answering your question? I see you shaking your head.
You're not going to, you're not going to go from where you are to a hundred percent proficient uh if you report this next year. So that goal is not going to be achieved. The question is, what, where, what is your milestone? Or have you started to develop them for where you'd like to track to tell you, yeah, if we're hitting this, we'll feel like we're. We're making progress, but if we don't, then maybe we got to do other things. Uh, like I said. This is something that really is. We use awfully soft metrics sometimes and they're mostly fish statements uh in in education. And I just encourage you to to put some stakes in the ground. You know.
I appreciate that.
I, I agree with you, Jack. And I think one of the things, um, we've really tried to focus on this year is if you think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, is, is right now our kids, that's why we spent so much time on the SEL, the social emotional learning, is because our kids were still experiencing, they're not able to even access their education. And, and we're still having, you know, um, students who, I, I just, I, I had three conversations today with three separate people who had nothing to do with each other, all talking about the same thing, which is where our students are right now, mental, their mental health and their emotional health is so damaged. We were looking at a report that was showing 80% of kids at high school were saying that they are experiencing anxiety on a daily basis. 80% of our kids at the high school, like, and that was taken last year, that, that assessment. But, but that's what we're dealing with right now. And so if kids are, if, if you are constantly worrying about, you know, where your basic needs are coming from, you're not going to be able to access education. And so pouring all this, you know, that's what we're trying to do is this year, build towards, how do we shift with the programming that's been going on for years here? Um, where we've, you know, had interventionists and they pull folks and they do the work and we're not seeing the outcomes, we're, we're clearly not seeing those outcomes. So how are we going to do that shift? But to say, we're going to see, we are, we're expecting to see 3% growth, I don't know. We've got kids that, I, I mean, were at a point where they were able to toilet themselves. And now we're back to the point that we're having to teach toileting to kids. So, so you, everyone's, there's a slide that's happened, uh, with kids moving, um, backwards on their needs. And so, you know, like if you're trying to teach toileting to a kid, you're, you're not going to be able to get them to access that, that learning that they need to do, that we used to be able to do with them. So I think it's really important that we, you know, we're taking that hard look this year to do the stakes in the ground to say, okay, what is going to, what's, where are we going to see growth and how do we make those shifts? One of the things we've really seen is, is Deb pointed out, is in the reading program that we invested in, um, at, just before the pandemic and everything, has not panned out. We are clearly seeing that the students are not learning where their needs are. And so we are making those shifts as we are working right now with going to the science of reading, but also what programs are we bringing in that we can, that we know have evidence-based, um, results? So, um, the other piece is, and it kind of goes back to what Jim Bizino was talking about, is how we use our, our, our grant funds. Because if we hire people, so, you know, when he says for every, you know, 26% of every dollar we get is going back up, that's on salaries. So for, when we hire a person, that's the, the, the money we have to put in for retiring. So, you know, we can go the route of, do we continue with consultants and bringing consultants in? Cause now we're, we're, we're getting more dollars towards our students or do we hire more people? So that's going to be the piece that we really got to, you know, probably going into this year, our thinking was, we should be hiring more people, so we got more people in, you know, of working with our teachers. But at 26%, with that, you know, with that 7% jump, do we need to maybe shift our focus maybe to more consultants?
Yes.
The harder the numbers you get, the better you're going to be, because they're a lot harder to retroactively modify. And I think sometimes it's also fine to say, we tried this, we assumed that if we did it, we got X and we got Y instead, is Y good enough or is Y a complete failure? And you, you know, you take on your next, uh, you know, you try, try something new. And, and I just, one of the reasons why we got stuck in ruts is because we often had such soft metrics, you couldn't really tell.
Dean, you're up.
I think the thing to remember too, as this work is being implemented, so as they're implementing and they're learning about the science of reading and they're doing this work with ALN, is that it's highly unlikely we'll see a huge jump next year. Or even it takes a few years to get that progress made by kids will want to see progress. And I think we need to be able to identify pretty clearly what, what, where kids are struggling and, um, really do deep learning around those areas of instruction and working with the different assessments that'll help us know, um, what's going on and how to respond. But I think it's, I think we would be kidding ourselves if we thought that next year we would see massive changes, because, both because of it takes a long time to close, um, learning, uh, like gaps like that, and because when you add something new, it's a multi-year process.
Thank you. Can we, um, move on to our superintendent? Andy?
Alright, so, um, a couple of things, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about pre-K here in a minute, just because that's under old business. But, um, the first thing, one of the things we included in the report, we actually just got it. The date, it was done on December 31st, uh, is a proposal, uh, for diversity, equity and inclusion uh, from Doctors, um, Morris and Dr. Cannon. Um, we had, um, our Kelly O'Ryan, uh, who's our diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator. After some of the, um, issues that we faced that have been at the, the high school, but also just looking at, um, overall, some of the issues that we're seeing with some of our students, just some of the stuff we talked about, um, and, and wanting to work with that was to reach out to, uh, these two doctors to, to talk about how can they come in and help support? And we can build, um, across our communities, um, some idea of equity, but also, um, that, have that conversation, uh, so we can have it in a safe environment, um, that's well-constructed and, and putting out. Um, and so I included the proposal to you all, because part of their proposal is working with the school boards and doing some work with, with the boards. Um, and, um, you know, we're looking to use, um, some of our, uh, grant funds to support this. So it's, um, it's something we think is important with our students, so that our students are, um, able to socialize and, and, and work together in a community and environment. Um, again, it's part of that whole social emotional learning and engagement. But it's also, um, you know, um, them working with the school boards, um, and, and coming in and having conversations with them. We didn't necessarily talk about, um, I, I know that circles haven't always been a, a popular, um, conversation piece. Um, but it's really been working with some PD, with the school boards, uh, developing and affirming language and sexual frameworks. So it's really getting the board as a top-down helping send the message. What, what direction are we looking to do? Uh, what are we doing? And then that work would go into, um, working with individual schools, um, doing a climate survey and a needs assessment, and then coming back with, um, some recommendations about what we can do, um, which may actually come back to talking about, uh, looking at some of our policies, which I know we've been working our, our tail off on, but do we need to tweak and adjust some of those policies, maybe those recommendations? So, um, but again, just wanting to, um, notify the board, I, I don't, you know, I, I think it's important, I think it's something we've talked about, um, in, in many different boards, but, um, I don't want to, if the board isn't interested in participating in it, and I don't mean to say that in a negative way, but I, I would love the board's support in, in being able to move forward with this, so. Want me to call the board?
I didn't, wasn't really sure if you were done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, uh, the, the question, the question I have on this, and I, and I know we all think we're, we're diversified and we're not diversified, but we're open-minded and all that good stuff. But the concern I have is, is the juxtaposition of the presentation we just had in this discussion here. And, you know, it, I guess that my issue is focus. And I, I, I'm concerned that, that the focus of this board and of the administration of the staff should be on getting our kids back into a, uh, into the proper educational mode. Uh, and it, it seems to me like this kind of a survey, which I'm sure is expensive. You've got two PhDs or something, and they're going to do all this stuff, look at our policies, oh, and, uh, so you're talking about probably a, a sizable amount of money. But then, but more important to me is, is the diversion of focus from our critical people. And, uh, so I don't know, I, I, I guess I certainly question the timing of this. If, if not, uh, really the value of it, but certainly the time.
I, I actually see a direct relationship between what we're wanting to do, kids, and also the need for this kind of training for a, a number of people. I happen to know these colleagues, um, very well, and, um, I know of their work and how committed we are to the educational process and to working with people in a, in a way that will help us to be able to make really good decisions as we move forward. So I am, um, very delighted, the fact that they have come forward to want to participate in our community. You know, they, they just, you know, they're just, they're really good at their work. And PhD is a non-problem.
Chris, Kimby?
I, I, I agree. I think that's kind of missing the boat if you, if you think that you can't, uh, if, if you want to improve student performance, but you have a certain percentage of your kids that are being harassed or having, uh, you know, a, a really difficult time being at school, they're not going to do well. So, uh, this goes hand in hand with student performance. And, you know, I was the one that did the investigations for years on end into this. And, uh, I've, I've talked to a lot of parents for, you know, uh, non-white parents and kids, and it's tough around here. It's, it's tough to have a different color skin and you, it wouldn't hurt the boards to open their eyes a little bit about this and have them open in a, in a friendly, safe way where, you know, and listen to these people at some point, uh, about their experiences. Cause it's concerning, uh, what goes on out on the streets and sometimes in the schools. But, uh, so I'm very supportive of this initiative.
You muted, sorry to say.
Sorry, um, I agree with Karen and Chris. I think that you, students can't learn if they don't feel safe and they don't, I mean, that's pretty, uh, fundamental learning science. If, and I think that it goes beyond skin color, it goes beyond, um, like background. There's, when we talk about diversity, equity and social justice, we're talking about students who have learning differences. We're talking about a, the broad range of students who we serve, who is our job to serve and make sure they have the highest level of education possible. And in order to do that, all students need to feel safe in their environment and no students will feel safe unless all students do. And I think that this is the type of work that's going to help students to be in a place where they actually can learn and then they can make greater progress in their learning.
Chris, what is it? Andy, what does it look like? What does it look like for the board as far as like, we're talking about, um, they come in, I mean, they must charge or something?
So the total, the total cost would be 26,000.
That is for what?
Uh, that's for, um, climate survey would be about $5,000. Another $5,000 on, um, working with the diversity and equity coordinator, um, policies and procedures, um, professional development sessions with not just the board, but with our building administrators and teachers is, uh, $12,000. And then action plan development would be about $3,500. Yes.
I, I, I agree, we need safety and we need the other. And thank you, team, for bringing up the fact that it's not just color, it's a lot of other, um, issues too. However, I, and, and I also agree with Jigs that we do need a real focus on our educational and, and increasing our student, um, ability to get there. However, I'm also looking at the fact that we couldn't do a board retreat last year. We couldn't, we haven't found any time to get together on issues, we haven't done other stuff. When are we going to find the time to do this? And when are we going to be able to do this? I don't want to waste money for something we're not going to be able to do. So I think that has to be part of the plan before we commit to doing something. And yet I do feel it's a very good and worthwhile project to be able to get safety and caring and all of those things in our, in our schools and in our community.
Yeah. Yeah, I, one of the goals for the retreat that we never had was actually this subject. I, I'm not necessarily sure that the, uh, that, that having a PhD tell us what we may or may not be ready to hear is necessarily going to get it, get you there. But here is what might. We need to, we need to decide, are we welcoming community? Now, we, we don't, you know, we, we've never had that discussion. Uh, what do we mean by being a welcoming community? What are the implications of that? Uh, how does that test out against the experience of parents and, uh, and students in the school? In a quantified way, because all we have right now is sort of, you know, third, third-party stuff. I, I, I don't know if it's a small problem, a big problem or catastrophic problem. Uh, but we, we've had, we've had a lot of, you know, testimonials, but not, not a lot of data. I, I do think that it would be useful to bring people together. Quite candidly, I think a, a good educational facilitator, there's a team down in, uh, in Keene that does nothing but this, that I've worked with elsewhere. I know some of the people personally, but, you know, and we have people that are professional facilitators, including one that just lives up the road from Cheryl, that could lead these kind of discussions, uh, and get us at least to a point where we know what it is we want to know. At that point, I, maybe you do want to bring in the PhD folks and, and get, and, and die, take a deeper dive. But I think the first step is you're the leaders of this community on matters educational. You need to decide how you feel, you need to decide, and, and, and there's no judgment if you don't feel it, frankly. You needed, you need to decide what your feelings are about it. And you need to decide what, if anything, you want to do about it. And I think that's a discussion you do in a retreat environment. And I would say that, get that information and then build a plan around what you've learned. Uh, and I'm hoping maybe y'all would consider doing that early in the next year rather than wait till the summer when nobody actually wants to be here and they all want to be in, you know, on the Cape or Maine or wherever the heck else they want to be. Well, let's get this worked out so that we, so that we know what it is we want to discover and what it, and how much we care about solving it. Uh, there's a, you know, in terms of what problem we have. Uh, that would be my, you know, candid, just, on this.
Uh, you know, Jack, I have to take a little bit of offense about this whole thing about being a PhD. Personally, but, um, the reason I'm saying this, at least, let me finish, please. So, um, you know, Dottie and, and Mary are absolutely the kind of people who are going to ask and help people understand who they are and who we are as people and what our challenges are and what our strengths are. They are those kinds of people, whether they have a PhD after their name or not. Um, so I just wanted to say that about them, they're like, the, the people that you're describing or that happen to be Cheryl's neighbor or whatever. Um, you know, I just know these people and if that's the kind of people you're looking for, they are skilled at being able to make that happen. So that's all I want to say, there we go.
Andy, don't we already have, we had this guy come. Didn't we, don't we have these, this type of thing already happening? We had these people, this guy came in, he worked for Greater Falls, something, he passed around something. Um, some of the board members, I think, you know, got smacked up, someone thought it was pretty hokey. Don't, don't we already kind of do this in a, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so this is a different focus, so this is. Yeah, so this is a different focus. So this is coming out of us identifying that not only do, have we seen an increase in, you know, harassment and, and bullying amongst our students and, and across our, our things, but also it's part of our overall reentry plan or, or Slosso with, with Esther though, that we had to put together, which is about family engagement and engaging families and mental wellbeing of our students. And just as everyone else has already said, like that ability of, of students to be able to socialize and get along, but within our whole community. John Ungalider with the Greater Greater Falls Justice is more about the restorative practices piece. This is more getting into the, having the, the difficult conversations as a community. And how do we, how do we move forward and repair? And how do we work together as a community? And what these folks would be doing is working with not only the school board, but be working with our teachers, our administrators, our students and our community, pulling in and engaging our community and having that overall conversation. And as Team pointed out, it's much bigger than a racial piece. This is about diversity of all different types. So it's, it's not just focusing on restorative practices. It's focusing on the greater conversation of, of how as a community do we come together so that we can ensure our kids have an education? I mean, we feel that administratively, that we need to do some serious work with our community and with our students and, and our faculty. Because their proposal included the board, I wanted to bring it to the board to, to get the board to be on board with it. I'm more than likely going to be moving forward with some type of this because we need to. We had a presentation to this board, to the high school board back in March of last year. And I wanted right then and there to do something like this because I felt we needed to move forward. We had an opportunity. We're now so far that, and it's taken, it, the timing of it, we started this conversation with, with, with these folks back in October. It's just taken that long to, to get there. There's not a, and they had presented, they came with a present, you know, a, a proposal. We pushed back a little bit and for some, that's why it just came out now. That's the only reason for the timing of why we got it. But I, I just think it's something our, we really need to dive into, to look at. And it's not just the racial piece. It's, it's the bigger piece of our diversity and equity in our, our whole community.
So one more question, and I see a lot of hands, but I just want to follow up on, so I understand what we're trying to do here. I understand it's going to cost me twenty-six thousand dollars, even if it was so okay. The conservative of me is like twenty-six thousand dollars where I can get that from, but I also know how important it is. I work with some young kiddos in this high school on a daily basis and, and I know that we need, we need to change what we're doing. Change how we're doing things in a, in certain places for sure. Um, I've been, I've thrown myself into the school system since my kid was a, in kindergarten and she's a senior in college. And I'll tell you the hardest thing I do and, you know, run a business or anything else is get the community involved in your school. We live in a great community. We live in a community where people are, are very engaging and, you know, you go to a football game and you can't park your car unless you want to pack it on the hill. But it's very, very hard to get them in, in an environment where they want to talk about the education of their kids. And, you know, what programs we should have and, you know, street talk is we should have shop classes back in here, but does anybody really come in here and talk to us about that? And, and, you know, that's just an example, but, you know, that's a hard thing to get your community involved. And this is a great community. And I mean, you know, I've, I'll do anything to keep them involved, but I'm, I'm really interested to see how they're gonna make that happen because the only time it really happens is if somebody thinks there's some gossip or something they can start, you know, it's, it's a tough thing. So how do we get the community involved? Because it isn't just the parents of the kids here as a community. Because if everybody doesn't own this, then we keep seeing tracks like we saw a couple minutes ago.
So we're going to do it anyway, right?
Well, we might, might have, I might have an adjustment to that proposal because we may not involve, if, if the board, and, and what I'd like to do is have them come and possibly talk to the board and explain, so.
Go ahead, Joe.
So I think it's clear that the superintendent has recommended this and that the administrative team feels strongly about this. And, and, and so I think all of us as board members, personally, you should hear that clearly. I support the proposal and I think it's important that the boards be involved. That's my recommendation that we do so.
So there's nothing really on the agenda and it has money, so it's got to come back.
Right. Well, and, and we'd be using title, safe and healthy school grant funds. So so it comes out of some of the work that we have to, you know, that we're, we're charted to do. And with our safe and healthy schools. Deb and I both do this, you know, is it title two or title four? I keep going back and forth with it because title one has to do with English language learning and.
But what your real question to this board is, is the board interested in participating?
Right. And there's differences.
I don't mind participating. I love. Yeah, I love it.
And I can get a, I can get a clear, what, what does it look like? Because I, I heard that very clear. Like, what does that look like? Does it mean asking you to come to more meetings or is it? Cutting out twenty minutes of a board meeting so that they can come and work with the board during that task. I, I think I heard that clearly. I think.
Um, with this process, would we be bringing out and bringing to our, our focus some of the different types of diversities? I know, like in the Athens Craft and School, wearing glasses is a real bullying issue.
Yes, that's the, that is exactly what we're talking about. This greater piece of diversity and equity is and inclusion and it's, it's not just about racial or ethnicity. It, it could be as simple as glasses. As complex as classes, I don't want them, so.
All right. Is it, you have a report also?
The only other piece, no, I don't have a full report because we just gave one. But was going to go over the preschool piece, if we can jump to that, or do you want to do the building grounds?
So, well, let's stay on the agenda because the building ground is really easy.
Can I ask a question first of the superintendent? Last time you had talked about a copy of attendance best practices, can you send that to us? Because that was something that you were starting in January.
So building grounds, we have a meeting January tenth at one o'clock. We're going to go to the Westminster Elementary School, the West West School and the Central Elementary School in Bellas Falls. And then we have seen them on, January tenth at one o'clock. And.
Where do we meet?
We will meet here at one.
The high school?
I'm sorry, not the high school. WNESU office.
And we're going to the center school.
We'll go to the Westminster Center School, the West West School and Central Elementary in Bellas Falls.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are now on to seven A pre-K presentation.
Can you all on screen see the presentation?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
A little wobbly there.
Well, it's because I'm, I'm using a Mac product going up through a PC product. That's why. They don't like to talk to each other.
Ooh, ooh.
Why is it doing that? Sorry about that. Yeah, that would get you. So, so what we're proposing is, this is a is an expansion of our current preschool and utilizing some Medicaid funds that we have that have, that have been collected over years that need to be spent down. But running a two-year pilot to study, basically based off of what was found in the feasibility study that was done just this past first part of our, our school year, where it demonstrated that only thirty-nine percent of our current preschool care is being met within our WNESU towers. And and, and so in looking at that and a, a group had met and they had looked at, what can we do to to fulfill that need, which was looking at expanding preschool by one classroom so that we can offer more seats essentially to, to students throughout the five days a week, but also full day. So right now kids come on a staggered. Jump in here if I'm wrong.
Kids currently come part day, part week and we want to increase them to full day, full week and full school day as opposed to full family working day, but so that they can be in preschool longer, which is supports educational goals, but also really supports our families. And the survey that we did, which the board requested and Andy's got some shots of it up there, said very clearly that families would use a WNESU preschool five days all day.
So, so some of the quicks that we, we put out, you know, where do you live? The majority of the, the folks responding were in Rockingham. The other half was, or the majority was in Westminster. Which I think, I know it's a little blurry, but those numbers are pretty correlate pretty closely to Rockingham is about sixty percent of the district kind of thing. So then we asked the question, as Jennifer was just saying, if we were to offer five-day-a-week program during the school hours, you know, would you, would, would you access it? And, and, and almost ninety percent was yes, they would access it. The ten percent, what, which was really interesting, were, those are folks looking for part-time. So people who answered it, everyone would like to have more access. It's just, there's about ten percent that are only looking for part-time. Which, given the numbers, would probably be doable or something, so. Then what was asked is, you know, if you, if your child, child, I'm trying to read that with the slash, but if they attended a five-school program, where would they prefer that be, that site be? Where we have the.
Thirty-two percent, I'm looking at the clean copy.
No, you're looking at the clean copy.
Thirty-two percent said they would prefer Westminster. Thirty-five said Bellas Falls and twenty-six said either. And that some, some said they would not attend, which again, when I dug down into the data was, I want part-time. They wouldn't come five days, they won't.
So what we currently offer is we offer one multi-age classroom at, at Central. And that's two groups to do partial day, partial week. There's one teacher admin, because that's where Jennifer is stationed. She has two paraprofessionals and then she has a part-time admin assistant. Then we also have one multi-age classroom at Westminster. Again, two groups, same structure, one teacher and one paraprofessional. So and then in multi-age being three-year-olds and four-year-olds. And right now the cost breakdown with, with everything, and, and that's what's currently been budgeted, but is three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in that current structure. What we are looking to do is to increase a classroom at Central Elementary. We've spoken with the principal. There's currently doing some shifting and, and some moving of of some of the support pieces. It's, it's a doable thing without impacting any of the educational offerings for students. But a three-year-old classroom and a four-year-old classroom. And that may ebb and flow based on the numbers, because those numbers change, but eight to three, five days a week. It'd be one teacher adding up to five paraprofessionals. That has to do, and Jennifer can explain this, but there has to be, the law says a certain numbers of adults per students have to be in the classroom at all times. And so you need, the teacher would, would float between the two classrooms because the teacher needs to be in the classroom a certain number of hours. But then you have the paraprofessionals who are there supporting the students when the teacher's not there. And then maintaining the one multi-age classroom at Westminster. But increasing the opportunities there. I, I think when we tease some numbers and, and, and looked at it, that if, if those numbers turned out that there were all four-year-olds who were looking to come to Westminster, we would try and honor that. And then those three-year-olds that had an offering would be offered at, at Central. So it's an SU program as opposed to individuals. And so the cost with the additional paraprofessionals and some supplies, to be honest with you, that's the difference, is about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And that impact would be used with Medicaid monies that we currently have. So just to kind of break this down, because I don't know if everyone fully understands how Medicaid reimbursement funds work. So Medicaid reimbursement funds come from special education services that are provided to our students through their IEPs. And so we have a Medicaid clerk who does, goes through and does all the billing. And students, depending on their level of need, you, you can get reimbursed for higher amounts. We average about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year in Medicaid funds. That's on the conservative side. I, when, when I asked Sue Ann Hines, she gave me a breakdown. We've had years where it's been closer to four hundred thousand dollars. So again, it ebbs and flows on that. The district years ago earmarked these funds for preschool to be, to be used to support preschool. And so we currently have eight hundred thousand in Medicaid fund. And so what we're looking to do is with the program at four hundred sixty-eight thousand, that's with the increase piece of using that eight hundred thousand dollars. That would bring our Medicaid fund balance down to about three hundred three hundred and thirty, thirty-one thousand. We'd be getting another two hundred and seventy thousand in Medicaid reimbursement during the school year. So that would, at the end of next year, would take our eight hundred thousand balance would be at six hundred and one thousand. And then we could go into the next year with a reduced, a little bit reduced cost because there'd be supply costs of
furniture.
Furniture and things of that nature to get the classroom up and running. But we would, we'd be drilling it down just so you, you kind of see where that piece would go of getting to it. So we would actually be starting the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So it'd be a little shy of, of what we are projecting the program would cost, but we, at that point feel we would know, is this worth what? So.
Jim, can I get a little background?
Yeah.
Jennifer, the according to the numbers that we get, there's thirty-two kids in the in-school program. Is that correct?
Currently, I have currently it's thirty-one.
Now, central, it was thirty-two, it was like sixteen at central.
Currently, there's seventeen at central. The numbers have been going down.
And what is it at Westminster?
So the thirty-two total is a smaller number than our pre-pandemic numbers.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to, just trying to get.
So Central has seventeen.
So let me just stop there. On the seventeen, you said they come for part of the day and. So like, let's say on Monday, how many kids are there?
On Monday, there's nine kids.
Nine kids and then it just.
There's the older children come three days a week.
Okay.
And the younger children come two days.
Two days a week.
And at Central, both of those groups are nine.
And 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 that's the same way they do it.
Correct.
It's active. The four-year-olds would come three days a week, the three-year-olds come two days a week.
Correct.
Now, what's your, what's your estimate of if you go to five days a week? What's your estimate of of attendance?
I, that's a really good question.
Well, you did this survey.
I I did. Well, and all of those people, the fifty-six people, all said we would come. So our capacity at Central Elementary would be two classrooms of thirteen. Children, so that would be twenty-six.
Okay.
And our capacity at Westminster Center School would be. Slightly bigger because it's one room and the licensed teacher. Will be there. So those part-time kids, it's complicated. Sixteen-ish.
Would be sixteen-ish.
Yes. So we. Capacity-wise could do twenty-six, thirty-six, forty-two students.
So you would do part-time at all at Westminster?
No, I would no, that's not. We would accommodate part-time. I'm I'm not going to. Talk about where I'm going to have slots because I I'm.
But there is a possibility.
There's a possibility. I have, this data shows that some families want part-time and we will be able to accommodate that without. Losing full-time slots for for anybody. So my plan is to just the. We send out a registration form and we say, do you want, you know, Westminster site or Bellas Falls site? And so I would say. I would have those questions and then we would sort the papers. My staff is actually.
So that would be without making them travel.
We're gonna do our best. Families don't actually seem to mind to travel as we know by. All the Rockingham families and the.
But some don't have the capability.
Correct. And that's what we do every year with the S U program is we sort of have families ranked, like what's your preference? And then we work with them to make it work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deborah.
I didn't have my hand up first. I'd like to let the people who asked to speak first go. There's at least a couple of people on screen besides myself. I just wanted to give them the chance for us to speak. That's all.
Jane. Thanks, Deb. I've spoken multiple times, so I would have let you go first, but I I'm I'm. In full support and full-time preschool. I have some questions and concerns around. I I know for a fact people not, there are families who will not attend if they have kids, say, going to Westminster and they get a Bellas Falls slot. I also have some concerns around. And I think the preference should go to four-year-olds because they are the ones who will be in the school the next year. And I just also have some concerns around the fact that. As a district program, since the pre-K is a district program, they're not really part of the school, whereas if. I think we need to talk about it outside of this district board meeting and talk about it as a Westminster board because I would. My preference, and I think the preference of the families of preschool students in the community of Westminster is that they are part of the Westminster School so that. They're part of that community and it's a. It. Is a. Just a smoother transition, but they have more impact of this or they have more. Work with the school in general. They can access specials, they can access everything that the school has to offer. That's all. Go ahead. Sorry, Dan.
Deborah.
Okay, um, my real reason for wanting to speak on this item is because there were a lot of parents who would put their children in full-time. Preschool, however, there are a lot of parents with young children, period, who can't stay home alone. When parents have to continue working, this is a major problem. It's gone for a very long time, decades as a matter of fact. And more and more time is being taken off weeks between holiday for holidays, weeks during the middle of the in the spring and. And so on and so forth. All this time off. When you tell them, oh, there's going to be five days of preschool or whatever it is, the reality is also not true because they're going to have to scramble to find someone to babysit their child if they are continuing to work. There are a lot of parents who cannot handle this problem. And I don't care what age they are, as long as they're not able to stay home by themselves. This is going to continue. I will not advocate for a program of this nature and putting this kind of money into it. I don't care where it comes from. Until we deal with a real problem that parents and families are not being positively affected this way. Their lives are being ruined, even worse now since COVID, in order to have their children go to school and be home when you guys choose, when school system chooses to take weeks of time off. With parents having no backup. So my understanding, my belief is that's time for us to make some kind of financial commitment so that children actually have care. So parent and men, parents can afford to pay your taxes to pay for these bills. Because they have, they can still go to work, which is not what's happening now. So a child going to preschool for five days a week will not be going to preschool for five days a week. When you take off a week between Christmas and New Year's. That's just the fact and we need to fix that. And that's my comments and I'm welcome to them. Thank.
Sure. Well, thank you. Ready for the comments? You just have one specific question. The 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 total number, the largest number of students, children we can serve is forty-two. Is that correct?
The, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. And that. The sixteen at Westminster is a little bit flexible and it's too complicated to explain.
A little bit of a stretch too, but twenty, but by licensing.
It's twenty-six.
The classrooms are are sixteen, thirteen each.
Yeah.
When when you have a licensed teacher in the room, you can go slightly. Higher. That's why that's the difference between this, the thirteen to sixteen, because the thirteen is because the teacher is bouncing between those. So if we had a teacher in every single. Classroom, you bump those numbers up slightly. So.
Slightly. I'm I'm just thinking about the perceived demand and what this could be as a pilot. Based on the number of responses that we got.
But and those responses, we drilled down. I mean, I I think. I think we'll get that many kids. I don't. I don't know that, I don't know. I mean, what a great thing to say to board me, but I don't. I. Those responses were people birthed through, people with children birthed through five. So there. You know, some people were talking about with excitement about their infants. Having this opportunity in a couple of years. So so even though it's fifty-six responses, not every one of those responses is a pre-K aged child.
Right.
And. We have always for all of the years that preschool's been running. Worked to accommodate and support families. You know, I can only be in Westminster for these reasons and making sure they get that slot. And I can only be in Bellas Falls. Because of these reasons, and some of them are transportation or there's some million reasons and they're all valid and we work really hard, my team and I, to make sure that. Families get those. Get those opportunities. And Teen made the point about there's families who wouldn't do it, wouldn't join pre-K in. Bellas Falls because they live in Westminster and then. We would have room for that. We would, we work with those guys. We have other families on the survey. Again, I drilled down and. Seventy-eight percent of the Westminster families in the survey said that they would prefer the Westminster site and. Seventeen percent said either is fine and six percent said they would prefer Bellas Falls. And so we, you know, it's sort of this very complicated. Thing that we do, but we. We want everyone to be, we want the families to be served. We want the kids to be in the school. We want. What Teen said, being a part of the community. I think having them there five full days. Will help accomplish that. I'm I'm excited about our.
Margie, you're up.
I was just gonna finish my thought.
Sorry, Margie, we got a follow-up. Hold on.
Sorry, I just wasn't wasn't quite done, only to say succinctly that I strongly support it. You know, we as as long as I've been a school board member. Going into my eighth year now, I've heard this need from the community and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I think it's an extraordinary opportunity. We have to see what happens and watch it carefully. I worry looking ahead about how we'll pay for it going forward. But at this point in time, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. So thank you.
Okay, Margie, you're next.
I also support, I definitely support pre-K expansion. I think a full day makes a lot more sense than. Ten or fifteen hours a week. That's that a a full school day makes makes a whole heck of a lot more sense, even with working parents. I mean, always your kid is only going to school from eight to three. So clearly, working parents figure it out those other few hours. So. I mean, having maybe having the pre-K have access to some of the after-school programs that are in the in the. School that they are located in, that might be an option. I mean, I know it's all. All the ratios are different for adult to kid. When the kids are younger, I I understand those complications, but maybe that's something we could look into as well. I worry a little bit about the mixed-age classroom in the Westminster site. Because as we had talked about last time. You were sort of saying that the three-year-old, once you're in, you're in. And if the whole point of having four-year-olds in pre-K is to prepare them for. Kindergarten, then we really want to prioritize the four-year-olds. And so I think I heard you saying that. Jennifer, the that you're aware of that or gonna, you're thinking about that.
Yeah, you've always had mixed-age groups. We've always, it sort of depends on who applies from year to year and some years. The group is mixed and some years it's not. And we. We have to see who the kids are that come and obviously if. We have a limited number of slots and the four-year-olds are priority. I have a. Email into the state checking in on the rule. I went back. I think I mentioned. Was it last time? Last time, Margie and I for sure talked about it. There there was a rule about how slots are filled when there's more kids than slots. But the law has changed several times over the years. So I looked back and then I emailed the state to sort of confirm that. Because I, right, if if we're talking about pre-kindergarten. And comes right down to it, four-year-olds would be the priority. I would hope to be able to accommodate everybody.
And and I think the reason, if I can just check that, I say, so the most I put on there multi-age for whether is if there was a family. Who had a three-year-old and a four-year-old that was from Westminster, we wouldn't tell a family. You know, we we try and put them in the same room as opposed to, sorry, the three-year-olds have to all go to Bellas Falls. And so now mom and dad, you've got to figure out some way to get. To two different places. So that's the reason why. And and I think just as Jennifer said, and I I probably said it, but then I said it quickly, is the priority would be four-year-olds and and to work with four-year-olds first. So.
Okay. And and then I guess the other piece that I just want to mention again is. The way that this. The supervisory union, the way that our pre-K early ed works. Seems unusual to me compared to other districts, like the way that we do it at the at the. At the S U level instead of each school. I mean, it's unusual comparative to Wyndham Southeast where, you know, the. Putney, for instance, the school runs the pre-K. It's all just part of the school. And I found it unusual and I found it challenging as a consumer. To even find the information. I know I've said this before, but like the website. So you know, when you're just a consumer, when you're just a mom. You are trying to figure out if there's pre-K at the school, you go onto the school's website. And there's like no information because it's not run through the school. It's run through the S U. And then I get on the S U's website and then it was just really. Not very user-friendly and not not at all easy to figure out the information and when things were offered, where they were offered. And I think it would be helpful to have a little more comprehensive. Website or include it in the school's website or or something because it it needs, you know, if we want kids to come. It has to be advertised and like run like a business, you know?
Priscilla, you're next.
Okay. Yeah. And one thing to keep in mind is we have twenty-six. Rockingham students in the preschools this year. So we have. A good number of Rockingham students definitely that need this. So if you're increasing a classroom at Central, that seems very logical to me. But we also, I believe, because it's run separate from the schools, we also have the option to charge. For the additional hours and the additional. So, you know, when we're worried about funding down the way or something, we do have those options. That that are available and we may want to consider a nominee even for next year or. You know, just starting out so that it's split that way. But it's that's something that's a detail also to be worked out. And something for consideration. So there's a lot of lot of details still, I think.
Didn't you tell seventeen kids in Central?
Correct, but twenty, there's twenty-six Rockingham residents being served by the public pre-K.
Okay, yes. Chris, you're your hand up.
Yeah. So I just want to remind, you know, folks who are new to the board, I. The, there was always an an assessment for the early ed program. It is just. The business office forgot to charge it for a couple of years and that's why money accrued. But I mean, so we have always. Had, I think, between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars that was assessed back to the districts for early ed and. I think people have good points. It's been an interesting discussion to to sit in and watch the. You know, there's the. Yeah, you could have it at each of your individual districts, but you got to follow the same set of rules. So it's. Having it, it doesn't matter whether you're lodging a school, you have to follow. This set of rules that come from AHS and. The Department of Ed. That's a whole, whole nother kettle of fish is the the way that the bifurcation of the. Of the regulations around it. And, you know, I guess you could say, well, this is consistent. What we offer. Is consistent from district to district. So I I'm. I like the discussion that's gone on. We've never had the board approve ever. Any changes to the early ed program. We have always just made the changes. We have never. Asked a school district to move a special ed program into their building. We or have a room for Title One folks. We've let the professionals make those decisions around their buildings. So it's good to have a discussion, but. I, what I don't want to see here tonight is is some sort of vote about this. This is simply the administration. Using their resources the best they can to provide. This this program for kids and we do it, they do it for Title One and they do it for special ed.
Jack, you got your hand up? Can't hear you.
Jack can't hear you.
You're muted, Jack.
Just a point or two. One is, you know, our board was asked when we, when our programs were moved into our buildings, maybe they don't ask when Rockingham, but. But they certainly asked us, they asked Westminster when we were joined together and they asked, and they've asked Rafton Athens. I mean, it's a small point, but they do, because they have, I can show you the record, but be that as it may, the the. I'm, you know, I believe in universal. But be that as it may, the the, I'm, you know, I believe in universal uh pre-K, universal early ed, just generally. I I do worry that uh there are access issues and there is going to be particularly those that affect our rural areas. And I, and I wanted us to remi- and ask the administration to be, you know, keep that in mind. We, one of the big reasons why we had a big fight over uh consolidation in our communities is because they didn't want, they didn't want to risk sending kindergarten kids to uh to Westminster. And now we're kind of in this situation where we might be sending a pre-K kids uh to there. So I just want us to, you know, involve the local communities. They are your allies, they are not the opposition, they shouldn't be rep, they shouldn't be regarded as such. Uh, there are, there are monies available, some from into, from the towns even, that would be supportive of programming. Because we've had that discussion in our area. Uh, let's just make sure that uh the that the most isolated and the most at need are serviced by whatever program we put together, that's all I ask.
Yeah, Molly, the uh, I had asked Jim, the, the, you've got a, you've got a car. Get it confused, but um when we do the budget, we normally do the early ed budget. Uh, there wasn't an early ed budget in there this year because of the snap flu with the uh with the Medicaid fund. So uh, I I'm surprised that Chris is commenting because I think normally we would be approving in the SU budget, the uh early ed uh budget. And uh, and it would be allocated just like the superintendent's office and so. So I think, I think whether it's voted or not, I don't care. I mean, I I I just think it would be uh kind of consistent with budgetary matters because even though there isn't an immediate cost, clearly, you're taking a a program, a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar program, and making a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar program, so, and you got two-hundred-and-seventy-odd thousand. So it's going to become a funding issue in the future. Question I had is, what kind of support does the state provide for early ed education? And are they encouraging towns to uh uh by increasing the funding for early education for these things? So it's a two-part question, what do they currently provide? And uh, are they looking to increase their uh payments to the towns uh to encourage this trend?
The town, the state requires through the law, Act one sixty-six, three and four-year-old, five-year-old, three, four, and five-year-old children by the school cutoff date, not enrolled in kindergarten, are entitled to ten hours of high-quality preschool per week for the thirty-five weeks that school is running. And school districts are required to pay a state-set amount, which this year is three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars per child for that education. So, or, and and children can get that in a school district run, which meets the requirements, or a private. And so school districts, Rockingham, Westminster, Athens, and Grafton, pay three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars per child to these private programs or for just the ten hours and then the families pay the rest.
So what is?
And what you get in return is each preschooler that you pay for or that you educated, one of your public sites counts in your ADM as point four-six of a student. So that's why way back when, sort of in the beginning of this conversation, I said, I think it was at a board meeting that might charge, when I opened pre-K in two thousand and two, was to give high-quality pre-K to as many students as possible. I mean, we used to have a teacher that went around to raise quality at the program so that we could count, we're trying to count as many kids as possible and of course, give as many children as possible, high-quality pre-K, supporting those families and those children. The state lets us.
But but I have to do a point four-six.
That's it.
Yeah, and I, but I'd have to do some, go back to get the second part of your answer is is because my recollection is that the secretary had made some comment about pre-K. But it could have been last year and and so I don't know. So I'd I'd have to look at it like like the movement towards expanding pre-K and and whatnot. Um, it it definitely was something that was talked about through ESSR because they knew families needed to get back to work and stuff like that. So I don't know if I I got those two mixed.
And there were separate ESSR funds. I mean, our pre-K got an ESSR grant entirely separate from all the ESSR that you talk about here. Between the two sites, we got I think between the two sites, we got twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the governor has said that he's committed to pre-K, but that's not this, which he is, but that's not the same as giving us.
Money, money, money.
Right. And I don't know if that quite answers you, Jack.
So my understanding is this is just a presentation. I I didn't think we were, I mean, nothing's been, nothing was on here saying that we were making.
I think we're saying this is what we're doing next year.
Perfect.
Thank you for your support.
I see no more hands, so I'm gonna thank you.
And thanks to those who joined us, Lisa and Lisa and Darcy, that are part of my team.
I think we lost Tim, Tim was here too, who's our special educator.
Right, Tim was here for a minute, maybe he jumped on Facebook.
So I have, um, we're down to new business, reviewing proof policies. Priscilla, you want to hit that?
How long will we approve those two policies?
Does anyone have any discussion on the policies? Priscilla, would you like to um have anything to say about the policies before we vote?
Um, basically, there there an upgrade um um what two policies that we have had in the past. And they, um, we looked at the state um required codes on some two and on B six and just kind of added, one thing that we did change um was that the um uh terminology under staff, the requirements under staff on two-one, two-one-point-two, the staff requirements that are based on that regulation and the statute in the state that allows us to um adjust that because that was quite different. So we put in their wording in place of what we had in our previous one.
Okay, uh, Teen, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a question, two questions on the drug policy. Um, one is, there was, is there, I couldn't tell from the policy, is there a consistent disciplinary response as a result of um students either having illegal substances on campus or consuming them, or is that a case-by-case basis?
Uh, if it's not part of, and I have to talk, I have to have it right in front of me, so I apologize. Um, but it would then fall to a procedure for each, for schools and how they put those together.
Right, and it refers to immediate procedures where it says that superintendent Desmond shall establish procedures for handling and related incident until a student has been discharged to the parent guardian. So that comes under procedures. There are specific procedures. It does lay it out, um, the requirements, because there are requirements that that you have to have as far as um allowing that it's treatable health problem and when it has to be um referred to um a police situation and those kinds of things.
But but I guess the direct answer, Teen, is I would work with with all the schools to make sure we had consistent, you know, based on the age of the student, right? We're not, you know, um, have we had incidences where a student at an elementary school um happened to, you know, a a a sibling or a parent had borrowed a jacket and left something in the jacket, so to speak? And are we going to suspend that child for ten days because of that? Or as a high school student who maybe has brought a substance in and is using a substance or selling a substance in a school type of thing, that you you might have a different response based on the level of the issue, just because you, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, and then I just had another question, which is like slightly to do with the policy. Uh, I'm just wondering, is there Narcan, Narcan at um on school sites?
I'll have to, I'll have to look into that, I don't know off the top of my head.
All right, I got policies.
Melissa, I I just have a a question about the minimum and optimal school district specific average class size policy. And as I read it, it it still gives a tremendous amount of latitude to the individual schools.
It really does. Um, that, we went with the um the ones that were in there previously as far as our leaving the the minimum averages and optimal average range. And since the uh the policy committee had um representatives from each one of the different districts, um, and we hoped if there was any discrepancy or anything that they were objecting to, they would discuss it with their own groups. And I know I brought it up with Rockingham before, you know, we we discussed this so that it was the same and we did not see any reason to change what had been in their previous level.
And and my point actually is that um class size guidelines will be used to inform annual decisions. So it's to inform uh WNESU and its member districts will use um a rule to guide the procedures. And then uh down below under implementation, it it just talks about um there may be differences to be respected, having to do with geography and other factors. And so I think my point would be that there is discretion still within uh.
And I think there needs to be because we've, um, if we if we set a hard line at, you know, at twelve, arbitrarily coming up with a number, then all of a sudden you get a student moves in, does that mean you have to open a whole new classroom?
Exactly, yeah, thank you. So still, it it, thank you very much.
Yeah, it 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 can go over if it needs to within, you know, because it's an average range too, which makes a difference. Also, um, they set statutory requirements for those and we have to follow. Those kinds of, we're required to set some kind of average minimums and.
Chris Kibbe.
Right, and I'm not wanting to extend this meeting any longer than it's going, but the the history behind that is that the legislature passed a law many, many years ago, back when Johanna Harpster was superintendent uh requiring this policy. And so these policies were kind of written to offend no one. And um, that's what you got. And uh, so there you are. But but it is a required policy, it was statutorily required.
Okay, are you ready to vote?
Yep.
I have motion on the table to approve C-two student alcohol and drugs and B-six class size policy and procedures. Deb, right?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Jack?
Sure.
Me?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next thing I've got is was our adjustment is eight-B project grad bus request. I got a, I received an email this morning from Michelle Dolph. And it says, Dear Miss Bannock and the WNESU school board members, I'm ready on behalf of the Bellas Falls Junior High School Project Grad twenty-twenty-three, coming to request two buses for transportation for the project grad event, as has been done in the past. The event will begin after graduation and the graduate parade through town on Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the graduates will return back to the high school at nine P M. Board the buses and will leave the high school approximately nine-thirty, go bowling after bowling until eleven forty-five. They will go to the Clamont Park and Rec Center until around five A M. And they will leave the Rec Center in the morning. They'll travel back to American Legion in Bellas Falls where they will be dropped off and treated to breakfast by the members of American Legion. From here, their parents will be asked to pick them up. And thank you in advance for your anticipated support. Sincerely, Michelle Dolph, parent of a senior and a project grad committee. We've always done this in the past. I don't know as we I don't even know if we have to, like to vote on this?
Yes.
And uh, the only, my only disappointment, and then I'll get off it, is that I'm kind of disappointed that some kids didn't come ask for this. Um, and then I got an email. I realized that probably somebody pointed at her and said, you better ask for it. But um, in the past, if we're reciting what was in the past, is that we've always had some kids come ask us and maybe they're a little nervous and maybe they had to be at eight-thirty at night, but they had to ask. So I, that's just mine. But um, I would like a motion um to, thank you. So there's a motion on the table to supply two school buses on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three to support the graduating class and drive them all around. Yes, Chris?
I I think we provide drivers too, don't we?
We do.
Not just the buses, buses and drivers.
Yeah, both the drivers.
That's where the kids participate.
They were gonna ask that you do the.
Unless you're volunteering, you and Jack. All right, so school buses and school bus drivers, um, let's start with Deb.
Aye.
Hardy?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Teen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Priscilla? Cheryl?
Yes.
All right, so we are down to, let's get to the director's comments. Deb?
Okay, okay, um, so I I have to say that I I all I want to say is the um the egregious way in which um the education um system is asking us to help them fill in the gaps of their borrowing from pensions needs to be addressed. And I highly recommend us doing what, doing what this board has done for many times, for many issues where we felt that our toes were being stepped on, our eyes were being poked and such. So I believe we should look at asking the attorney his opinion on that and see where we can take it because I don't think it's appropriate that twenty-six percent of every federal dollar is being sent back to the state for them to fill their pot of money for pension, thank you.
Thank you, Hardy?
I'll pass tonight.
Jack?
I'm good.
Teen?
I'm good.
Chris?
Awesome.
I can barely hear you all, but I can't hear you really.
Priscilla?
Um, as referenced tonight, feelings of safety and teaching caring for others needs to be a true focus for us to recover feelings of normalcy, which may be our new normal. And the only way we'll get to that normal is to focus on that.
Cheryl? And caring. Oh, sorry. Cheryl?
I appreciate all the presentations that we had tonight. Um, I'm think, thinking about, we're now beginning, you know, it's just the second half of the school year and just um appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness as we move through it and hope that we're really truly recovering and improving and supporting uh everyone in in our community. So thanks, everybody.
I listened to um Deb's comments and so I didn't want to get too many more comments on the pre-K presentation, but this is what I wrote down. We tried to go big with preschool and it got shut down hard. Um, my working mother, my whole time of being a mother, and it is very hard and I, you know, I I was a little disappointed that um, we had a few people that shut it down so fast. So um, I kind of, I I wrote that down when Deb spoke because it is a very true thing. And I hope that we, with all the things that we think is right or wrong, and we all have our own opinions and we all but uh, the real truth is that, you know, we're involved in the school system, we go to the best we can for our kiddos or we're not doing our job. Um, the next meeting date is January eighteenth. Thank you very much, good night, meeting, Karen.